And welcome to the October eighth, twenty twenty four Eugene Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. My name is Jason Lear and I'm the Vice Chair of the Eugene Planning Commission. To begin this evening, I'd like to call on Commissioner Beeson for the city's land acknowledgement statement.
Since time immemorial, the Kalapuyia people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife. Hang on that. I'll refine my place here. Just a second. Maintaining balance with wildlife and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between eighteen fifty one and eighteen fifty five, Kalapuyia people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government, forcibly removed to the coast reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and the resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Kalapuya Elohie. Kalapuya descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes Grand Ron Community of Oregon. Confederated tribes of the Sallets Indians of Oregon, and they continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. Therefore, the planning commission recognizes that what we do today will affect the many generations who will come after us.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeson, and thank you to everyone joining us in this virtual meeting format. Today, our meeting will begin with a public comment, followed by two work sessions. First is a community engagement update for the Urban Growth Strategies Project, and the second is climate-friendly areas selection. Anyone wishing to join the meeting online can do so by following the instructions listed on the agenda for this meeting. Planning Commission meetings can also be viewed by watching the livestream available on our website or the broadcast on Comcast Channel twenty one. For those who join the meeting via computer, device, or phone, your microphone, webcam, and phone are automatically muted when you enter the meeting as an attendee. If you wish to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting and haven't done so already, please raise your virtual hand now to join the speaker's queue in one of two ways. For those viewing the meeting on a computer, laptop, or device, click once on the blue hand icon. For those listening to the meeting on a phone, press star nine. Public comment is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the planning commission on any topics except for items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record is already closed. As a reminder, your hand must be raised to be in the queue for public comment. And staff, do we have anyone wanting to provide public comment tonight?
We do not have any hands raised for public comment at this time.
Got it. Well, as always, feel free to contact the staff if there are comments you are not able to provide or wish to get to us in a different manner. I'll now close public comment. Before I turn it over to staff, I just wanted to note that thirty minutes has been allotted for this agenda item, uh, the first on our list, so commission has adequate time for our next agenda item and climate-friendly areas selection, and this may limit our time a little bit for questions on this topic. Like to turn it over to Stuart Warren to begin, uh, the staff presentation, and following the staff presentation, commission will have the opportunity to ask questions. Stuart?
Thank you, Commissioner Lear. I'm gonna share my screen. You all see that all right? Great, and Terry's gonna kick us off this evening.
Great, thanks Stuart. Good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is Terry Harding. I'm the principal planner for the city's community planning and design team. And as Commissioner Lear noted, we're happy to be here tonight to bring two items that are part of urban growth strategies. The first is Stuart presenting an overview of the twenty twenty four community engagement summary for urban growth strategies, and then Leah will lead you through your second item on identifying climate-friendly areas. First, a note that our engagement in twenty twenty four is not over, so the summary in your packet should be seen as a living document. It does reflect the bulk of our community engagement for the year, and there has been some really cool stuff happening that we're excited to share with you. So for tonight's presentation, Stuart will talk about key questions we're asking the community member, asking community members and groups, provide an overview of the engagement summary and the key themes that have emerged from listening to the community. We'll then end with about fifteen minutes for your questions. We want to try to keep this to thirty minutes, as Commissioner Lear said, so we have ample time for climate-friendly areas. But we do encourage you to reach out to myself, Leah, or Stuart if you have further comments or questions about engagement. And now I'll hand it to Stuart.
Thank you, Terry. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Stuart Warren, and I'm an associate planner on the community planning and design team. I'm going to provide you an overview of some of the engagement activities we have done since January of this year. Think of it like a snapshot of the midway point in our two-year engagement plan. Community Engagement Summary, Attachment A in your packet, covers the past ten months of engagement and has more information than I'm going to share with you tonight, including links to a lot of event-specific engagement summaries that are rich in information and available for you to dive in deeper. Before I jump into the overview, I want to highlight how meaningful the conversations have been for staff. Many of our community members, almost nine hundred in fact, have taken the time to share their needs and priorities with us. Many of them have been brave by being vulnerable. Some of them have invited us into their homes and a community, and many of them have allowed us to see little glimpses into our, how our built environment impacts their daily lives. Their stories and experiences help provide the support for future policy outcomes of urban growth strategies. As I mentioned, the twenty twenty four community engagement summary is included in your packet as Attachment A. In the summary, you will find an executive summary, an overview of the urban growth strategies project, an overview of the engagement activities and associated quotes when possible, a discussion of how many people have participated in the project up to mid-September. The summary also includes the key themes that have emerged across most engagement activities and events, and it has an overview of where we're going next with engagement. Lastly, it has links to a lot of appendices or individual event summaries. As a quick reminder, the Urban Growth Strategies Community Engagement Plan includes a variety of integrated tactics and activities, both general or broad, and targeted to specific communities. I will work through some of the targeted outreach first, then transition to the more general slash broad outreach in the second half of my presentation. The first engagement activity I want to share with you were community presentations and table and opportunities. With the help of our two interns, Marilyn and Abram, pictured on the right, we've been getting out into the community through community events and presentations to community organizations. The events and presentations were targeted towards underserved communities but reached a broad audience. For example, we targeted at the Asian celebration, excuse me, tabled at the Asian celebration, Noche Cultural, and Homes for Goods Community Night Out. We also attended a handful of events specific, uh, events in specific neighborhoods like the We Are Bethel Celebration and Far West Neighborhood Picnic. Through this method of engagement, we talked with nearly four hundred people through eighteen events. This method of engagement kept us really busy, but we feel like the work was worth the effort. Another series of event we have done are listening sessions. These listening sessions were opportunities to have conversations with people about their experiences in our community. With the help of a local consultant, we participated in two listening sessions with members of underserved community groups. Both events happened in their spaces. We shared a meal, then staff gave a quick presentation, asked questions, listened, and took notes. The first session was at Peace Village, which is a housing cooperative that bridges the gap between homelessness and conventional housing. The second session was with the Wednesday Wheelers, pictured on the current slide, a community group for people who use wheelchairs. Through these listening sessions, we engaged with thirty-two community members and heard about their needs and priorities for housing and centers through their lived experience. The third activity we've been moving forward is a series of working group meetings with housing, development, and business partners. I want to thank Commissioner Beeson and Edwards for attending and participating in his meetings. To date, these meetings have covered barriers to housing, housing goals, and prioritizing and refining housing production strategies, centers, and climate-friendly areas. We've had four meetings and are planning for four more. Our next meeting is tomorrow, October ninth, on the land use designation map. So far, we've had forty-six partners participate in these meetings and have learned a lot through their professional experience. Social engagements are opportunities to hear stories from black indigenous people of color community members about their experiences with things like finding housing that they can afford and accessing daily goods and services near their homes. We've hosted one of these social engagements so far at the Black Cultural Initiative. We worked with community collaborator, collaborators, two of whom are pictured here, David and Eva, to facilitate the event and recruit participants from BIPOC communities. The first event was coordinated with two other city divisions who are doing active community engagement, the Sustainability Program and Community Development, and are planning for future social engagements next year. These events are focused on building community and relationships. Much of the first session prioritized storytelling, and I expect that to continue through future events. To illustrate the depth of storytelling, I want to provide you with a quote from one of the participants. Looking at the history of African-American experience, the past eighty years have been a story of migration. From slavery and civil war and up until the early nineteen seventies, you see families on the move. There's hostility in our community about race, and we are still living in the nineteen fifties. At this point, I'm gonna talk more about the general and broad outreach tactics and activities we've done so far. Last June, we hosted a successful open house at the Farmers Market Pavilion. This event was intended to reach the broad Eugene community and did. The open house was a great opportunity to hear about housing needs and priorities, preferences for centers and climate-friendly areas, and sharing information on several, seven other city programs. We estimate that about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty people attended. Our team also developed and administered a community-wide digital survey and mapping activity. These activities were focused on understanding the community's ability to access goods and services within a close distance from their home and their preferences for future climate-friendly areas. One hundred and ninety people provided responses in the survey, and the mapping activity received about six hundred and forty-one responses. The map on the right is an analysis of the mapping activity that shows where people wish they could go for specific goods and services around Eugene. We'll be working on a deeper analysis over the coming months. Engagement summary section on participation outlines how many people participated in the forty-five engagement events and activities we hosted this year so far. In total, we have heard from eight hundred and sixty-seven people. In addition, we've had more than twenty-six thousand touchpoints with the community through online communications and digital newsletters. In my professional opinion, we've had been, we've been successful reaching a broad spectrum of community members, and we are working to identify specific community members who have not engaged yet and will adapt our future engagement activities to create meaningful opportunities for them to participate. Now, for the moment, I know you've all been waiting for, what did we hear? The following themes are things that we heard across most engagement events and activities. Engagement summary contains a longer list of key themes, but the ones that we heard across most engagement activities were housing affordability, availability, and choice. High housing costs in Eugene are impacting many people who call Eugene home. Many members of the community have a difficult time finding housing that they can afford, that is the qualities that they are looking for, and is in locations that are desirable. We also heard a lot about neighborhood qualities. Many people in Eugene want to live in neighborhoods that have high-quality walking, biking, and transit infrastructure. They are looking for neighborhoods that are welcoming and connected to areas that have grocery options, jobs, trees, parks and open spaces, and places for social interaction like restaurants, cafes, and bars. We also heard a lot about housing discrimination. Years of housing discrimination have inequitably impacted members of underserved community groups. Often lacking, lacking generational wealth and access to community amenities like grocery options and high-quality pedestrian infrastructure, some members of underserved community groups expressed that they felt unsafe in their current housing due to poor housing conditions, experiences, or fear of violence, unsafe transportation infrastructure, and housing discrimination. Given your next agenda item on climate-friendly areas, we wanted to highlight a few themes that we heard about them. On preferred climate-friendly area locations, downtown was the most commonly preferred location for a climate-friendly area. Staff also heard differing opinions about the approach the city should take for designating climate-friendly areas. Some folks thought the city should go big and designate a lot of areas, whereas others felt the city should take a more strategic and phased approach that would maximize the use of limited resources. We also heard a lot of support for more mixed-use centers that have useful services and safe and welcoming transportation facilities for people who walk, bike, take the bus, and drive. Some areas like Bethel, River Road, Santa Clara, and southwest Eugene have limited access to these types of areas. The most commonly preferred type of centers were neighborhood centers or areas like the small neighborhood grocer and family-owned restaurant, cafe, and bar down the street. So what are our next steps? Staff have recently begun a series of meetings with Youth Advisory Council, pictured on the right, to include the needs and priorities of young people and urban growth strategies. Started by Mayor Venice in twenty twenty, the mission of the Youth Advisory Council is to narrow the divide between young people in Eugene and the local government by providing a voice for other young people. The project team from Urban Growth Strategies and staff from other program areas will engage the Youth Advisor Council on four specific topic areas, engaging young people, equitable access, building more housing, and planning for climate. These meetings will be used to inform staff on the policy outcomes of urban growth strategies. I must say that we are so lucky to have this opportunity to engage with such a thoughtful, passionate, and diverse group of people from all over Eugene. Staff are excited for this opportunity and will work to integrate their needs and priorities in the policy outcomes of urban growth strategies. Next, staff are finalizing the scope for the Equity Advisory Panel with the help of a local consultant and a consultation with the Office of Equity and Community Engagement, and we'll be bringing you more information about this panel in the coming months, so stay tuned. Lastly, I want to highlight that there will be a lot more community engagement in twenty twenty-five. Now, I'd like to turn the table back to the chair for questions and discussion.
So I guess I wanted to see first if anyone had any questions. We're doing good on time, so don't be afraid if you got one. We got a couple minutes to spare. Doesn't look like anything at this point. Oh, Commissioner Ramey?
Uh, good evening. So you said you're gonna first ask for questions. What are you gonna do? I don't understand. So is this a chance we have to ask questions or is it another chance, or where, where are we in the agenda?
Oh, yeah, you missed at the beginning, just that was noted. We've got about thirty minutes set aside for this first half of the presentation. And so, uh, if you've got any questions, we definitely have time to, to hear them and have staff respond to them. But, um, if there's anything more substantive, you might be able to approach staff outside of the meeting, so we save as much time as possible for the currently areas designation.
Got it. No, I heard that. I guess I just ignored it. So I do have one question. If we're engaging the community about urban growth strategies, it seems like we're getting a lot of information about housing needs and I, I get it. That makes sense. How, how are we finding out about jobs needs or parks needs or infrastructure needs or those other categories that are, that are part of an urban growth strategy?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Ramey. It's a good one. Uh, I think a lot of those questions will be involved in our second kind of phase of engagement over the next coming year, but it's not, uh, being left off our agenda by any means.
Yeah, I'll just add, um, and I can't actually remember if this is in the written engagement summary or not, but twenty twenty-four priorities were housing needs and priorities and talking with the community about centers, um, concept, kind of that concept and, and how it'll feed into the comprehensive plan. So next year, um, we'll get a little bit more detailed into like land use efficiency measures, some of the draft HPS actions, right? Getting a little bit more into the weeds on policy. And then some of those other urban land uses, um, starting with our public sector partners, but then also going out to the broader community, um, as that gets fleshed out. So lots more to come next year.
Well, just by way of comment, I wanted to mention, it seems really amazing that you're looking at so many different ways to connect with the community and to go out into the community, as it seems like the level of community engagement coming to Planning Commission and probably to the department generally has kind of ebbed in recent years. So I think that's really laudable and awesome. Does anyone have any other questions or want to add to the discussion at all? Okay, so moving on to our next agenda item, I turn it over to Leah Roush to begin the staff presentation. While in the staff presentation, the commission will be asked to vote on a preferred option to recommend to council.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lear. I will go ahead and share my screen and then hand it off to Terry to keep it off again.
Thanks, Leah. So for this second item, we'll be continuing to discuss local implementation of the state program known as Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, or CFAC. Thank you. Tonight, I'll review how climate-friendly areas fit into urban growth strategies and Eugene's ongoing planning for mixed-use compact development. And then Leah will talk in a lot more detail about climate-friendly areas, the three staff-proposed options that you heard about in August, and the staff recommendation. And then we'll have time for your questions, discussion, and recommendation to council at the end. City Council is scheduled to hold a work session and potential action giving us direction, uh, on November thirteenth. As a reminder, there are three phases of the Urban Growth Strategies Project that we're integrating this climate-friendly area work into. Identify Eugene's needs and priorities for housing, study what land is needed for jobs, housing, parks, schools, and infrastructure, and using what was learned, create and update the regulations, guidelines, and maps for using land in Eugene. As you know, Eugene has been planning for compact development for a long time. Climate-friendly areas align with many of the city council and city organizations' priorities, including implementing the Envision Eugene Community Vision and completing the Comprehensive Plan. Urban growth strategies also include several projects that align with the Housing Implementation Pipeline, or the HIP, the Climate Action Plan two point O, and the city's current strategic plan and the council goal for sustainable and accountable development. As it relates to climate-friendly areas, Eugene's vision already calls for focusing future growth and investment in and near mixed-use centers to provide convenient access to daily needs like housing, jobs, groceries, parks, schools, and services. By the end of twenty twenty-six, Eugene needs to pick some of these areas to be designated as CFAs and have them adopted into our planning documents. The good news is we're a ways down the road in our mixed-use center planning and can continue to advance city goals for all parts of the community using existing and planned local tools and programs. Regardless of CFA designation, Eugene is planning for mixed-use centers to be convenient and climate-friendly, connected with high-quality infrastructure for people who walk, bike, take the bus, and drive, and comfortable and safe with trees and spaces for people to socialize. The city's planning for three different types of centers. They are the downtown center, core commercial centers, and neighborhood centers. For today, we're focusing on the upcoming decision council will be asked to make, selecting which centers should be designated as the city's official climate-friendly areas. Not all centers should be designated as CFAs, at least not right away. But there are a few different ways we could approach this designation process, and for more information on all the details, I'll hand it over to Leah.
Hi, thanks, Terry. Again, my name's Leah Roush. I'm the senior planner on the Community Planning and Design Team. Been coming to you all with climate-friendly areas, uh, for the better part of a year at this point, so we're, we're ready to take the next step in the city's implementation of the climate-friendly areas component of the CFAC rules. So as Terry said, you know, this is a specific designation directed by state administrative roles in the climate-friendly area or CFAC. And the climate-friendly area, or CFA, is intended to be an area where most people can meet their daily needs without relying on a car. They're envisioned as one type of mixed-use center. With the highest density housing, jobs, and services, as well as great walking, biking, and transit infrastructure. As Terry said, Eugene already has a long history of planning for walkable mixed-use centers. We don't expect that all of Eugene's centers will be designated climate-friendly areas. Ultimately, CFA designation tries to marry zoning and development regulations with transportation improvements. By designating a CFA, Eugene will take a few steps. We'll update our housing and transportation plans to. Revise our development regulations to ensure the areas have opportunities for higher-density mixed-use development. With a focus on housing and non-auto-oriented commercial and public-serving uses. Will identify and prioritize improvements that make it easier and safer for people to walk, bike, and take transit to their destinations. And finally, we'll implement strategies to avoid or minimize the displacement of residents who may be vulnerable to housing instability or housing discrimination. As well as preserve and increase affordable housing options. CFA designation unfortunately does not come with automatic additional state funding to support these needed improvements. That means that any improvements needed to support higher-density development, mitigate displacement, or improve transportation facilities would need to be locally supported. As a reminder, our process to designate climate-friendly areas has three steps. So last year in two thousand and twenty-three, Eugene identified and studied the most promising locations for climate-friendly areas across the city based on key state evaluation criteria. This year, we're looking for the city council to select areas to designate. Then staff will begin the process of preparing an adoption package, including code and plan amendments. As we've discussed, CFA designation won't be static. They'll serve as an important strategy for more efficient use of land within the current urban growth boundary. Each time we revisit the urban growth boundary, which will now be every eight years for housing needs, we'll also revisit our designated climate-friendly areas. So I'm getting a notification. That my computer's about to die, so I apologize. I'm just gonna plug it in really quick because I didn't realize it wasn't plugged in. I'm sharing my office space right now, so someone unplugged it on me, but should be good to go. Sorry about that. Okay. So taking us to that first step within the CFA study. We use quite a few evaluation criteria to narrow down the parts of the city that are the best fit for this specific designation. Our key narrowing criteria included current zoning and development regulations, so looking at. Is the area planned as a high-density mixed-use urban center? Could the existing development regulations comply with the state rules with relatively few changes? We looked at active transportation and transit, so is the area served or planned to be served by high-quality walking, biking, and transit facilities? And then we looked at redevelopment and development conditions, so can the area support? The types of development intended for CFAs, which is high-density residential and mixed-use development. Knowing that zoning alone doesn't create new density or housing, so in wanting to use this designation effectively. Narrowing to areas that have the market to support this type of development. And I'll talk about that work in more detail in a few slides. There are some other important considerations highlighted in the study that I won't talk about today, including proximity to parks and public amenities and housing displacement risk. So across all of our different zones that allow for higher-density residential and mixed-use development. We wanted to understand the changes needed to bring current zoning into compliance with CFA standards. We focus our analysis on just a few key components. So first, looking at outright permitted uses, including housing, offices, non-auto-oriented commercial uses. Education and other public-serving facilities. Then we looked at minimum residential densities and building heights. In short, our existing higher-intensity commercial zones, which are C-two and C-three, are the most compliant with CFA standards. The relatively small changes in C-two and C-three would be introducing a minimum residential density of twenty-five units per net acre. And making sure the CFA uses are outright permitted. Our higher-density residential zones, so R-three and R-four, are less compliant than the commercial zones, mostly because of that list of outright permitted uses. Similarly, some of our existing mixed-use zones, like the Downtown Riverfront, are less compliant because of their building height transition areas. So given our evaluation analysis so far, staff proposed three options for CFA designation that we brought to you all in August and city council in September. Tonight, we are asking for your recommendation informing that second step in the process that I outlined a few slides ago. Selecting a preferred option for areas to designate as climate-friendly areas. We're taking this interim step prior to final decision-making, so we have enough direction to begin development of the adoption package, including our typical land use process, which has. Proposed amendments to the Land Use Code, to the Comprehensive Plan, and any needed rezoning or designation. As well as that multimodal transportation gap analysis and determining any housing production or housing displacement mitigation actions. That are specific to climate-friendly areas. All of that information will lead us into our adoption process in two thousand and twenty-six, where you'll make your final recommendation to council. So I'll briefly again review our three staff proposed options. The first meets the minimum state requirements focusing primarily on greater downtown Eugene. The second option is expanded to include core commercial centers that are more promising for CFA-like redevelopment based on our redevelopment analysis. And the third option is expanded even further to include commercial corridors that could benefit from additional investment and incentives to see CFA-like redevelopment. The first option is concentrated, as I said, in the greater downtown. Meeting the state's minimum requirements for accommodating our current and future housing needs while advancing a local priority for more housing downtown. It includes the downtown core, the Fifth Street Market area, midtown, some of the high-density residential areas north of thirteenth, as well as lower Coburg Road. It does not include the Downtown Riverfront, as I said, that area would require more changes to the existing special area zone. So new since the last time I showed you this presentation. And we've added kind of draft maps showing draft boundaries of these areas, really just based on the contiguous current zoning. So we'll do more work in two thousand and twenty-five to actually refine these to parcel-specific boundaries. Including deciding how to treat public lands and historic properties, which certainly have a different development capacity. These draft maps are really just to give you a more granular sense of the areas. And for anyone who may be interested in or notice a specific property that may appear to be included, I'll just state very clearly that these maps and these boundaries are unfinished. And we have more work to do to determine the specific tax lots that would be included once city council identifies their preferred option. As I mentioned, we'll then go through the typical legislative process in two thousand and twenty-six to finalize and recommend final boundaries for adoption. So these maps show just the areas included in option one, which as I've said are kind of greater downtown, including the midtown and Fifth Street Market areas all the way. Towards University of Oregon, as well as the C-two commercial area on Lower Coburg Road. Some of the opportunities for this area, I've mentioned some of these already, aligns with our housing, uh, city priority for more housing downtown. That includes some areas that have existing and new financial incentives for housing in the downtown core and the urban renewal district. It's primarily developed as higher-density mixed-use areas already. And has high-quality active transportation facilities in transit service, with the exception of some needed improvements along Lower Coburg Road. Also an area well-served by parks and public amenities. Some of the constraints we see for this area include, you know, we would need to make some land use code and zoning changes, especially that little area of. High-density residential, as well as some possible rezoning downtown. It does concentrate the CFA designation in kind of one central area. And will likely require us to expand our CFAs sooner than the other options, because we're leading, meaning less of our overall housing need. Will also have less impact from CFAs as a land use efficiency measure than we would have if we had designated more areas. Option two expands CFAs to more parts of the city, including some of our more promising core commercial areas for redevelopment. And these areas are expected to support higher-density and mixed-use development, including the commercial centers around Valley River Center, South Willamette, and Santa Clara Station. And here are some draft maps. So these are in addition to the maps I showed you for option one. So option two would bring in these three new areas all zoned as C-two community commercial. Again, these are draft boundaries just based on the contiguous current zoning. Some of the opportunities for this area include that the additional areas are existing core commercial centers, which are highly compliant with CFA criteria. The additional areas are well-served by parks and public amenities. The option extends CFA designation to more parts of the city, reducing our need to revisit soon. And the option includes core commercial centers along several key corridors targeted for transit improvements, including River Road and Lower Coburg Road. Some of the constraints for this area include that, you know, some of these core commercial centers may still face challenges to redevelopment. Without additional investment and incentives from the city. And while we have incentives that could help, like the multiple-unit property tax exemption program, they still require dedicated staffing and funding to implement. The active transportation facilities and the transit service in the additional areas do need improvements. And the Valley River Center area may require some additional analysis as it was not included in the CFA study. The Santa Clara Station area would need to be treated a little bit differently to be what's called a secondary climate-friendly area to maintain its existing building type restrictions. So our last option here, option three, expands CFAs even further to include two of our key transit corridors, which are Sixth and Seventh Avenue and the West Eleventh Avenue corridor. These areas are planned as well as core commercial centers, but they require additional financial investment. And to improve safety and comfort for people walking and biking, as well as incentives to support more high-density housing and mixed-use development over time. In addition to the maps I showed you for the first two options, option three would bring in these two commercial corridors, again, zoned C-two community commercial. Some of the opportunities for this option include that the additional areas are again existing commercial centers, which are highly compliant in terms of zoning with CFA criteria. This option extends the CFA designation even further, reducing our need to revisit any time soon. This option also aligns with community engagement, supporting improvements in these areas, especially the Sixth and Seventh Avenue corridor. And the additional areas are well-served by existing frequent transit. Some of the constraints for this area include that these areas are strict commercial corridors, and they face challenges to redevelopment without significant investment and incentives. Again, zoning alone will not be enough, and the city would need to invest additional staff and financial resources to be there. The additional areas are primarily auto-oriented, and the walking and biking facilities would need significant improvement. These corridors also have more adjacent industrial zoning, which is certainly a consideration when citing new or more intensive redevelopment. Residential development. So after completing the CFA study, after the redevelopment analysis, our engagement and conversations with you all in the city council. Staff are recommending option two for CFA designation. Option two includes greater downtown, the commercial areas around Lower Coburg Road, Santa Clara Station, Valley River Center, and South Willamette. Option two is a middle ground. It allows the city to exceed the state's minimum requirements. While starting the CFA designation in core commercial centers that are more likely to achieve walkable, higher-density, higher-density development. The city can then assess the successes and challenges to making these areas more climate-friendly. When CFA designation is revisited in eight years as a part of our state-required housing planning. At that time, staff will have a better understanding of whether the state provides additional funding resources or requirements for projects within designated CFAs. We don't believe that CFA designation alone will be enough to address the needs of auto-centric commercial corridors that currently cannot. Support mixed-use higher-density housing development, such as Sixth and Seventh Avenue, West Eleventh Avenue, or even Highway ninety-nine. These areas would need substantial investment from the city through both financial incentives and improvements to transportation and the public realm. To support redevelopment and progress towards a more climate-friendly built environment. These areas are also adjacent to industrially-zoned properties, as I noted, which pose some equity concerns if we encourage more housing development on the corridors. While city council may decide to extend financial incentives to new areas, so outside of downtown in the future. It is unlikely that the city could financially support adequate investment in an expansive list of new areas of Eugene. For these reasons and others documented in your agenda item summary. Staff recommend option two as a compromise that allows the city to exceed state minimum requirements. While using the CFA designation efficiently and effectively. So tonight, again, we're looking for your recommendation to city council on a preferred option identifying areas to designate. We'll go to them in November for their direction. In two thousand and twenty-five, when we have those areas identified, we'll focus on some of the work to implement CFAs through urban growth strategies. That'll include drafting policies in the comprehensive plan related to centers and key corridors more broadly. Looking at strategies to mitigate potential housing displacement. Completing a multimodal transportation gap analysis in our CFAs. Which considers the needed improvements for people walking, biking, and taking transit. And then any changes we would need to make to our existing policies, land use code in the comprehensive plan primarily to get this ready for adoption in two thousand and twenty-six. So with that, I'll hand it back to the chair to open it up for questions and discussion, and hopefully walk away with a recommendation to city council.
Yeah, thank you for the recap and the great presentation, Leah. So who's got questions or would like to enter the discussion? Commissioner Bailey?
I have a quick question for Leah, just on the map. From option one of the downtown area, I could not see on the legend. The meaning of the designation of the red area or the dark blue. Could you let me go with?
Yeah. Let me just scroll back to my map and I can drop it back up for everyone too. That is a great question, Commissioner Bailey. The red in the center, as well as along the University of Oregon. Here is our highest kind of intensity commercial area, so that's C-three. It is also very compliant with CFA designation. It's concentrated just downtown for the most part. That is, yeah, C-three. Now I'm dropping the name of it in my head, it's not a new commercial, but someone can chime in if I've major commercial, I see it in the legend. And then down, the dark blue is the historic zones, properties. So we'll need to kind of figure out how to treat both historic properties and public lands, which are shown here in dark blue and and light blue. We wouldn't anticipate like rezoning those or getting rid of the historic designation by any means, but we just have to kind of work with the state to understand. You know, can we include them in the climate-friendly area as a kind of contiguous body without assuming development? Or redevelopment on those properties. So that is what those, the dark blue indicates.
Threw myself into the mix there. I had a couple of questions. The first one. Might be kind of dumb, but I'm sort of curious why the downtown is the is in every option and. In some ways, you know, it's pretty obvious because the downtown is already such a commercial center, but just given. That the changes to zoning alone and the other changes don't seem like they would potentially have a huge. Impact on downtown. I guess, yeah, I'm just curious. Is that just kind of to meet state requirements or? I guess, yeah, I'm I'm just curious. Is that just kind of to meet state requirements or?
Yeah, it's a good question. We definitely did did start with the assumption that we would designate downtown um and then go more expansive from there. So there's certainly been the conversation of like how much of downtown, which parts of downtown, right? This like greater downtown versus the core. Um, but I think we did start with that assumption. I think climate-friendly areas broadly um as crafted by the state were meant to be kind of downtowns and and core commercial centers. Um, your highest density kind of parts of the communities. So you're right. Um, it doesn't, the CFA designation doesn't necessarily change a lot about how we approach downtown, but um felt like kind of the most obvious and and natural place to start. Um, we also certainly have a priority to a city priority in our strategic plan um and through urban renewal and other tools to um increase the amount of housing downtown. Um, that's certainly been a priority for a while for the city. Um, CFA designation is is one piece of that, but we also have existing financial incentives like MUPD. Um, the urban renewal districts downtown, um fee assistance and the accelerated MUPD, which are in front of council right now um to continue to facilitate that development.
Another just quick one, is the designation of more rather than fewer CFA is going to result in time or just the cost of time for staff to do extra analyses and, you know, the the transportation work, for example?
It's a good question. Um, from I think the land use perspective, not necessarily. I mean, the, there's a few more people we have to provide notice to, right? More property owners, things like that, but the actual like land use code amendments don't change too much if we go to option two versus option three, for example, um especially because they all sh- primarily share that C two zoning. Um, the transportation gap analysis, it's like a little bit more effort, certainly. Um, but that, as the state has described it, is not meant to be a super-heavy lift um for staff, so we talked to our transportation planning team and that's something they would do in-house, kind of using existing studies and GIS layers and things. Um, so that part of it is not uh a notable amount of extra effort. I think it's when we get to looking at incentives and actually making the investments, not just identifying them, but doing the construction, right? And the planning and the modeling that needs to happen to actually um bring those projects to fruition where it becomes more sig- certainly more significant in terms of effort and investment, um the more areas we look at.
Okay, thank you, Leah. Uh Commissioner Fragola?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm curious about um how the, some of the feedback that we just heard, um engagement, um information around um feedback from some of um some communities that have been historically marginalized um may represent lower socioeconomic communities, be more vulnerable. Um, you heard about housing discrimination, safety. I know there are healthy um communities issues. How how did that feedback inform the areas that we that were identified?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, a lot of our engagement um focus more broadly on the centers' work and concepts and how we um structure that work and structure the policies in the comprehensive plan. So climate-friendly areas are certainly a part of that, um but we had typically more broad conversations about centers, um what people wanted access to, what exists today, what barriers they might experience to um accessing those types of centers. So um as Stuart said, a lot of what we heard from folks was that having those kind of smaller-scale neighborhood centers um was certainly something of interest across the board, you know, from including the general public and in our conversations with kind of um underserved community members. Um, certainly, there is interest in from the community and from underserved groups in um investing in and prioritizing neighborhoods and areas that have seen historic disinvestment. So I think Sixth and Seventh is an example of somewhere people would like to see transformed. Um, but as well as other kind of neighborhoods across the city uh where people kind of are currently living and wanting to see those investments in their neighborhoods. So um, we did hear, you know, an interest in downtown, um that being a place that um we continue to invest in and make safer and see more housing downtown. Um, continuing to move forward with neighborhood centers concepts with, which again falls kind of a little bit outside of the CFA designation. Um, I don't know, Stuart, you would have anything else you would call out in particular for Terry? Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Leah. I just wanted to add that it's been a challenge and an intention of staff's work this year on engagement to fit climate-friendly areas into the context of overall work on urban growth strategies. And it it is challenging because this is a new, highly technical state designation with a lot of requirements. Um, and we were already doing a bunch of work on all of this stuff. And so it's a great question that we're still working through, but what I wanted to add was that we have upcoming engagement designed, um as Stuart mentioned, we're taking these recommendations and next steps on CFAs to the Equity Advisory Panel um, starting in the beginning of twenty twenty-five. And that will be a big part of their work, is giving feedback on those draft tools and informing the equity-related requirements of the housing planning work that is still in rulemaking and is part of the overall um picture. So it's a great point. Um, we're working hard to make sense of how all the pieces fit together.
Great. Um, may, may I have a follow-up, Commissioner Lear, Chair Lear?
Of course.
Thank you. Um, you know, first of all, I I do want to acknowledge the great work that you're doing um and have always done in this regard to connect the dots between um some of the historical and current social inequities that um are represented when we begin to talk about planning and investments in community centers. Um, and you know, I I think it's fair to say that when you, when you look at the options, right, that that third option includes some of the areas in our city that would benefit the most as as Leah pointed out, from investment and transformation. Um, and I I would really love to see that happen, but I I do want to say that I am supportive of option two because um I think it is the right focus for our community, for our city right now. Um, I, Commissioner Lear, I didn't think your question was at all um a silly one, because I have been saying all along, just focusing on downtown felt like we were just checking the box. It already is a dense, developed, mixed-use center. And I would like to see us go farther to be, you know, begin to challenge the community to transform towards um being more multimodal, climate-friendly and dense. And I think that's an opportunity represented by option two. Um, and that, you know, at some point, hopefully, we will get to some of these other areas as this process moves forward, especially in eight years. So I appreciate all the work that's been done um to get us to this point, and I am supportive of option two.
Thank you, Commissioner Fragola. Uh, Commissioner Beeson?
Thanks. Um, I've been going back and forth on this quite a bit over the last couple of months. And even a little bit today, even. I've been going back and forth. Uh, I've I've been thinking a lot about whether it's option three or option two. When these these options, by the way, a- as I think about them, they're kind of like nesting bowls. They're, you know, option one, of course, we want to do it. Option two, I think, of course, I want to do option two. And option three also, I, option three begins to kind of separate a bit as I go through the material from staff and I I hear more about it in terms of potential cost and uncertainty about that. But I want to emphasize for me, uh, all three. Uh, uh, option three kind of covers uh an area that'd be great to give this designation to. Um, I've also, as I've thought about it, I I I've I have heard the concept of going big, and I'm I keep kind of coming back to, you know, when you really look at this, it's this is basically our our C two zone. And in fact, the option three, the whole collective group of streets here in this area is about half of our C two zones, near as I can estimate. I kind of am one who thinks that a C two zone over many years would end up having all the attributes we talk about here. Would end up being, we'd want it to be uh walkable. We'd want it to be places where people could live without having to drive. Uh, they, it's on the urban corridors. Um, it it, it just presents a lot of opportunity for our city to do things kind of efficiently. So, uh, I, um, what I'm thinking, I I really have been kind of torn on this. Um, when I, when I think of option two, I I guess I find option two pretty, I I'm happy to support option two. Um, I think, you know, it's really kind of important to be pretty cautious in this a bit. There, it appears pretty clear how we might go forward with those two options, uh particularly with no identified funding out there from the state or from the city to kind of go beyond option two. Um, I, you know, and we may be able to uh go further uh in the future, depends on funds and so on. And I'm, and so I find myself kind of comfortable with the idea of the middle ground as it gets talked about, and that's probably the most prudent thing. I I have to say, though, as I keep batting it around, I'm really landing on option three. And I want to kind of make a bit of a briefcase for that. And I'm I'm reminding myself for sure that we are making a recommendation here. We're not the decision-makers. The council's going to get to uh have a lot of conversation about this. I happened to glance at what they talked about on the twelfth and heard some of them talking a bit about it. Um, but when I, when I think about option three, I really, I I've kind of said here a bit. I I think we want all of our transit corridors to be diverse, mixed-use, walkable areas. Uh, and when I look at option three and I see the sixth, seventh area, the eleventh uh avenue, those corridors, they are really not very much additional land in the context of our city, in the context of the C two. They're they're a bit more than option one and two, but the bulk of it's in option one and two. And I I would also, I've noted that op- the uh Sixth and Seventh and Eleventh survived the narrowing process. They've got, we've been working on this for a year and a half, and we've gone through and a lot of areas have dropped off. Uh, but I, yes, uh, Sixth and Seventh, Eleventh are still there. And I think that these are clearly important corridors in our community. And and I think um for a lot of reasons, it might be important now as opposed to two or three or four or five years from now, to pay some attention to them in the context of this designation, of the kinds of things that we might be doing there if we designated them for a CFA. So um, these CFAs, I think the i- idea is to kind of, I I'm uh, you know, we want to, we want, we're trying, I'm trying to get, I've lost my track. I have a couple of notes. I I think the other thing, and I'll try to conclude here, when I, when I really kind of come down to it, everything we're trying to do with this is really supported as most of our work is supported by all our plans, all of our policies over the years, the climate policy, everything we do in terms of equity, our transportation plans and so on. And um, I, you know, I I'm kind of struck when I I was looking at the the uh land acknowledgement statement today before the meeting, since I was going to read it, and I was reading the last statement in there over again, that what we do here. Uh, what we're doing here tonight's going to affect generations for a long time. And I'm, I'm finally, and I I I don't want to get too subjective, but I found myself watching what's going on in other parts of the country and all the devastation in multiple states and another big hurricane coming into Florida and all of that. And I'm, I'm thinking, you know, I, we really ought to be trying to do today uh what we can to meet our climate goals and to meet our transportation goals and do those things that are in Envision Eugene and uh not put it off. Uh, again, it's going to be the council's decision. I'm kind of hoping they can conclude. And I believe that over the next eight years or fifteen years or however this all plays out, that our city be able to manage the implementation of the option three, including the Sixth, Seventh, and the Eleventh, be able to manage uh manage it within our our uh capital plans and so on. So I'm, I'm going to support option three. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeson. Does anyone else have any commentary or questions? I'll throw myself back in there a second time if, why don't you go ahead, Commissioner Bailey?
Thank you. Um, I don't mean for this to take us off topic, but after listening to Commissioner Beeson, I realize I want to add my own personal interest, which has to do with the development of neighborhood centers. And I'd like to know, beyond CFAs, beyond these designations, in all of your outreach, there's an interest in neighborhood centers, places where we can gather in our local communities, have a little coffee shop, have restaurants, have places to interact with people. But I don't believe I've seen that appear anywhere yet on your work schedules in the future. And I wonder when and if we are actually going to take up the issue of development of neighborhood centers. Because if that's coming, I'm more comfortable supporting option two and supporting you in the work you're trying to accomplish with that. But I want to see the rest of it beyond option three. I want to see the development of the neighborhood centers, which are desperately needed in our further-reaching areas, you know, past Santa Clara and out here in Bethel, Danabo. And I'm sure some other neighborhoods in town. Thank you.
I will just say very briefly, Commissioner Bailey, that yes, it is coming. Um, it is a big part of the work that we're doing with the Envision Eugene Comprehensive Plan, which is a phase of urban growth strategies. So um staff are working on, you know, responding to the engagement we've done so far and then drafting goals and policies um specifically in our compact development chapter, which is where we flush out those three kind of scales of centers, including neighborhood centers and the policies, um our policies, but the tools we have to actually support those neighborhood centers. So um Stuart and Terry, if you want to add anything there. Stuart, I can't hear you. Oh, now I can say something.
You hear me now?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bailey, I'll just add that it's very much in my work plan. I work on it almost every day. And so we are working uh with the, what we can do through engagement to figure out how to make these neighborhood centers more viable.
And I'll, I'll add one more little piece, um, which is to recognize and acknowledge that the entire Bethel neighborhood is beginning a neighborhood action planning process. And that is a look at needs and priorities and tools for realizing the community-wide vision within the neighborhood of Bethel. And um as I know, you're very familiar with Commissioner Bailey, there's huge interest in additional neighborhood centers, commercial businesses in throughout Bethel. And um and those tools that Stuart's working on at the policy level in the comprehensive plan will eventually need to be implemented through tools like zoning and incentive programs. Um, so they are on the work plan down the road a little bit.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailey. And before I speak again, I just wanted to make sure Commissioner Ramey, see if you had anything that you wanted to speak on at this point. So a couple of comments that I wanted to make. As per our last discussion on this topic, under the current law, there's not really any incentives built into the CFAs as of yet. Some could be created by the city council or the state legislature. And so it seems like, you know, we've narrowed it down that we're mostly making a relatively minor set of tweaks to zoning and, and transportation analysis possibly. As noted by Commissioner Beeson, Eugene zoning already covers most of the requirements of the CFAs, which staff has shared since our C two might be ahead of the curve in terms of what some other communities have developed for their zoning code. In some Oregon communities, these CFAs could potentially have a really big impact on zoning and encouraging a certain level of density for the areas. But it seems like that won't really be the case as much in Eugene. So I also wanted to mention, you know, if we can encourage city council to expand the support for the CFAs, that seems like it's going to be the most, you know, meaningful option in terms of ensuring that they produce some change in our community. You know, MUPD was mentioned a few times in the last discussion, and I believe it would significantly increase the impact of a designation. But also understand that given the cost of such an expansion, it seems exceedingly unlikely that a, a large scale expansion of MUPD, which is the multi unit property tax exemption, would be able to cover, you know, many areas in this proposal. You know, let alone say even proposal one, but all of the areas in proposal three, it just seems unlikely, especially in a budget cycle like this. We're going to see like a substantial expansion of those types of incentives, which are pretty costly. On that note, I do think, I'm not sure whether this is the time that's right for that recommendation. But as mentioned in the last meeting, would love to see us make a recommendation to city council, specifically on that incentive, multi unit property tax exemption and potential expansion or exploration of expansion. But I do think that maybe in order to avoid setting unrealistic expectations of what the CFAs are or can accomplish, I'd be leaning towards support of a narrower designation selection. Like option one or option two seems like it could be a good potential consensus option. And including a statement to city council recommending that the CFA designation be supported with financial incentives like the expansion of MUPD to allow for development where appropriate. And that's where I'm currently leaning in terms of which option I would, I would most like to support. Commissioner Ramey?
Oh, thank you, Chair. In an effort to move us along and get to a discussion mode, or I, I would like to move that we recommend that the city council select option two as the council's preferred option for climate friendly areas designation.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Commissioner Fragla. So now we'll have the opportunity for some more discussion. Commissioner Ramey, would you like to continue?
Yes. Yeah, I would like to speak to the motion. From the beginning, we, we have recognized as a city that nodal development is an important part of going forward and simply put, that's the combination of transportation and land use planning with the idea of creating walkable neighborhoods. Or at least that's the way I interpret them. So we, that's been around for years and years and years. So this, now the state has come forward with this idea to kind of fine tune it and, and put a different kind of, it doesn't, it doesn't do away with the existing notes and to Commissioner Bailey's point, I mean, we're, we're 20 years into this process or more, maybe. We're going to keep going on, on all of our nodal developments. It's not, this, this is just a flavor of nodal development. So, and I think to some degree for me, I, I think having, having this designation doesn't mean that we've given up on the others. It means that we've picked these as a certain strategy towards moving ahead. When we began the process, we started thinking about, well, where, when do we know when we're done? How do we know which areas are appropriate for this and which ones aren't? And the answer I think was we, we want to find the best fit. And so the staff walked us through today and thank you again for all of your work. Well, how did they determine what the, well, it was about, you know, transportation, obviously, land use, obviously. But then there was this other component about, well, what is, what is actually feasible from a redevelopment standpoint? And I think that's the part of it where I begin to think, okay, well, maybe this is a better fit for us to be at option two. Because we're, we're really, we're really matching up that, that development potential with the realities of, of zoning and, and transportation. And I think designated them now is a way to, to show the city and all of us that this is, this is one, again, another step in our, in our, in our work of combining transportation and land use planning. So I, I, I do want, as a commission, I want to, I, hopefully we can send a good message to the council. The way we can be most helpful to them is to sort of pre-sort the, the issues for them. And I, I, I think this material that we've got before us really does a great job of that. I don't know how, how this vote will go. And maybe if we're split two, two, that would be fine, too. That would say to them, well, look, we're, we're absolutely with option two. And a half of us or more wanted to go for option three as well and leave it to them to sort that out. My own feelings are that frankly, option two is, is kind of a neat stretch already with the Coburg and the Valley River Center areas to make people, really shake people up. And to try to go beyond that to the strips on, on 11th and sixth and seventh, I think is really too far of a stretch at this point. Again, it doesn't mean we can't do that in the future. But I think now it means, oh, let's concentrate our efforts on these places that are here right before us. And let's do a good job with what we've already started building on and let's, let's keep going. And, and I think option two is, is a good way to do that. Again, I think it, it is, it is the best fit for us. It's, it's not only meeting the minimum requirements, but it's stretching us a little bit, and I like that. So I'll be voting in favor of my own motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramey. Commissioner Fragla?
Yes, I, I'd just like to reiterate my support for option two. I agree with Commissioner Ramey, I think, you know, based on the entire process that we've been through, that this seems like the recommendation that is feasible from development potential. And I think it's really important that we are stretching ourselves, but that we also are looking at the criteria and feasibility, particularly with so many of the challenges in our housing market. I, and I, I also think it's important to remember, this doesn't mean we will never get to sixth and seventh or 11th. I would really like to see revitalization in those areas. And as we continue forward, forward in this process and we show success, I think that'll make it even more likely that we can fold those in in a future evaluation. All the work is there and it will be, you know, ea- more easily moved forward. So I, I think option two is, is what makes sense for the capacity that the city has as well as the criteria that we've looked at.
Thank you, Commissioner Fragla. Would anyone else like to share an opinion? We do have a motion before us, so we can vote on that, too, when everyone has had the opportunity to speak. Commissioner Beeson?
Yeah, just a couple of other comments. I, I appreciate the discussion and I'm, I want to reiterate, I, I am definitely in support of option two. And option one. I, I'm probably going to vote no, because I, I, I really do. I think it's important having the discussion we're having, having all of the material that's been put together over the last year and a half or two years, and we kind of bring it in and, and offer up for the council, for their use, at least kind of the opportunity to hear kind of some contrasting views of it and see, kind of to help them kind of arrive at a place to make a decision. So I, I'm still, when I look at, when I look at the, the whole package, I'm thinking it's really not any kind of big stretch. Again, sixth and seventh and 11th survived a long narrowing process. Granted, there is the issue of potentially costing money. And again, I'm, I'm thinking we might be able as a city to look for ways to manage that. But I, anyway, I do appreciate the discussion and I'm going to, anyway, I wanted to make those comments. Thanks.
Commissioner Bailey?
So this may seem like an odd comment, but if the CFAs are intended to be walkable neighborhoods, it strikes me that a mile long strip mall is not particularly walkable. And so I have less interest in including the long stretch down sixth and seventh and 11th. I think those will call for a different type of development or redevelopment. But when I go to run my errands, I'm not looking to walk an entire mile to get into the different stores and services that I need. So I also support option two.
It seems like we voiced pretty significant support for option two and then also a little bit for option three. Does anyone wish to offer further discussion or have any other questions before we maybe vote on this motion? Commissioner Fragla?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have any other further discussion to offer. I'd just like to request that when we do vote on it, that you read the motion again prior to us voting.
And I want to make sure that we got it right there. Commissioner Ramey, do you want to just read it back to us again?
Yes, my, I thought I was reading it right from the agenda, so I, I hope I got this right. I move to recommend that the city council select option two as the council's preferred option for climate friendly areas designation.
So the motion has been proposed and seconded, and we've had some good discussion. Maybe we can go ahead and take a formal vote now. All in favor of the motion as provided by Commissioner Ramey to recommend option two? Can you raise your hands? And then all opposed? So that motion is adopted four to one. Well, fantastic. Glad we had such a really interesting discussion on this subject. And unless staff would like to add anything else, I believe we're on to our next agenda item. Next on our agenda is items from commission and staff. Are there any items or info to share from commissioners? And staff?
Absolutely. So just as a reminder, you do not have a meeting next Tuesday. That one's been canceled. You'll be back on the 22nd for a public hearing for appeal and then the 29th to start deliberations on that appeal. Couple of other just things of note, I know I keep mentioning this. But you will be virtual through the end of the year. We are looking for some alternative locations to be able to meet in person next year. I know, as you talked about at the retreat, that that's important to you. We also have a preference for meeting in person, so we'll keep working on that. The slot room isn't going to be available probably as soon as we were hoping. So we'll, we'll keep looking for some options for that. And then just some city council meetings of note. Again, October 30th, they're going to be having a work session on voluntary annexation. Leah will be back to them to present your, your recommendation and other things that we've heard about the climate friendly selection. That's November 13th, and then the middle housing remand, the public hearing for that will be November 18th.
That's great. Is that all for the announcements? Anything else? Anyone else on the staff wishes to share? Well, in that case, thank you all for a really enlightening and interesting discussion and for spending your time here this evening. This meeting of the Planning Commission is now adjourned.